...tonight, um... ...will be limited to two minutes per person for a total of thirty minutes. Uh, please complete a request to speak card prior to the meeting. Uh, I have quite a fistful of these already, so... Speakers may not yield their time to others. Please, in order to encourage an environment of openness, courtesy, and respect for differing opinions, uh, differing points of view, please refrain from behavior that is disruptive to the meeting such as making loud noises, clapping, shouting, booing, or any other that disrupts the orderly conduct of the meeting. Abusive language will not be tolerated. So, this is, uh, an opportunity to speak on any topic other than a matter of litigation, quasi-inducational land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. So, the first person I have here, and as soon as he gets up here, he will be subject to two minutes, is Alan Coyne. Hopefully, I'm pronouncing that correctly.
Kane.
Kane? Oh, Kane, I'm sorry, Kane.
Hi, thank you for letting me come in. So, I'd like to readdress, second time, the issue of the children that are involved in this housing crisis, the homeless crisis.
Louder.
I would like to readdress the issue of the homeless children that are involved in this homeless crisis down there. Uh, I brought it up during the last meeting. Uh, for the most part, I was, I was running off assumptions that there was offenders living down, present down there. So, I had to pay for my own search because I, I'd reached out and received no feedback from parole probation or the state police as far as offenders that are living down there.
Yeah.
Uh, I received no information back about offenders that were living down there. I had to pay for my own search to be done, uh, in which case it ended to be one result of a man that committed, that killed himself down there. And that's the only reason I will use his name, that Pride Jones was registered down there at, uh, Wyecam for his address. Uh, he's a pretty predatory guy, well-known in the community. Uh, I was reassured the DHS had done welfare checks on numerous occasions and found that these children were safe and that they were able to stay in those environments. If parole probation is required to, to vet an address before somebody can register there, how are they letting somebody that is, that, that status of registration live with children that are already in crisis? If DHS isn't protecting them, parole probation isn't protecting them, state police let it slide by, who's going to protect those kids? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Howie Hakama.
Um, I totally agree with Remy about, uh, with the, uh, additional locations immediately for the car and RV camping program for our houseless neighbors. Um, even with that, that, even if you found nine more and each one of those took on three, um, that would be twenty-seven vehicles. Um, so I'm a little concerned about that. Um, but, but what about those that are living in the tents or without a tent outdoors? What do they do? Some are not well enough with their physical and mental disabilities to pack up their belongings at six-thirty AM and then come back at nine-thirty PM to set back up on a daily basis. Also, where would they go during the daytime hours? And what do they do with their stuff during that timeframe? If a low-barrier shelter campground is not possible due to pushback from some of our citizens, even if it is outside of the city, then what will happen to our houseless neighbors? They will start trickling back into the neighborhoods once again. I don't believe that this will fix the problem and is not a realistic solution. There are many on social media who just want to put them on a bus and get them out of the city. However, some of our neighbors are from McMinnville and have lived here all of their lives. And is it correct to, um, send our homeless, houseless citizens away from their hometown?
Thank you, Howie. Michael Conaway, hopefully I'm pronouncing that correctly.
One of my primary issues...
Speak it to the mic.
One of the primary issues that I have is with regard to the police's actual ability to enforce law on that side of town. I see on, like, Yonka Watch a constant stream when I go to search for that area of events, and then we're told that everything is fine or that there's not enough funding, and the only thing that most of us can think is that there's a traumatic failure of leadership occurring, that we're now going to be the example to so many cities within the region that this is the appropriate way to go about handling things. When we obviously have, excuse me, when we obviously have some sort of a crisis of culture occurring that's giving rise to so many people in the area needing these types of services, I also have a difficult time imagining how we aren't incentivizing this when there's such tremendous access to services and so little, as far as I can tell, mechanism for coordinating all of those services so that we can actually determine who is temporary. There's a big difference between homeless and squatting, and I don't see anyone addressing these. And you talk about there being propaganda, it's not propaganda, it's eyewitness anecdote. So, I find that to be somewhat problematic of a view of what so many of us are seeing, especially when just trying to go pay your, your water bill or walk down through Third Street. How do, how do outsiders view us? How do people come here, see what we have going on? And imagine this is the future of any productive society in America, and yet we're taking a leadership position. We need to do better, and it needs to involve systems that actually help people. I want to help people. I don't want to send people away. I want to see people actually having services provided that get the job done. And right now, I don't think you have statistics, I don't think you know what's actually going on out there. I think you're talking pipe dreams because you don't actually have things in order. So, let's not make policies off of guesses and conscience, conscience that's misplaced.
Uh, that's your two minutes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, I caution you against clapping, please. Uh, the next person is Desmond Corrin.
Hello, um, one, one concern that I had about the, um, the, the, uh, recent law that was just passed, sorry, I'm a little bit nervous, um, is that it's, it seems it could result in a lot of people having their, their, their homes taken away from them, basically, and put them in a worse situation than they already are, which, um, doesn't seem to be very productive. Um, I mean, one of the things that I've been trying to do is organize, um, trash pickups and water drop-offs for the folks down there with them, um, and I've met, met a number of them. And I think the thing that gets lost a lot is they're just, they're just like you and I, I mean, they're just people, and, um, you know, the idea of just running everyone out of town just seems really abhorrent. Um, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Desmond. Our next person to speak is Stacy Mayhew.
Um, I have things that I wanted to say, but with what has happened here tonight, I would like to respectfully ask the council, um, how many of you have managed sites on your private property? I'm assuming many of you are private property owners? Any of you?
We're not responding tonight, you're chomping.
Yeah, okay, just, I think it's something that we should all be asking, um, because, you know, you lead by example. Um, and so with that piece, I do believe, um, I agree with Remy that that is a part of the solution, it is not the entire solution. Um, there's also the public part of that situation, who's going to manage that. Obviously, we can see that when people decide to squat on public property, it's very difficult to get them to obey our laws or to get them to move and follow the laws. So, if there's a public aspect of that, who's going to manage that would be my, would be my question there. Um, my husband and I have lived in, um, this area for over twenty years, and we've loved where we've lived for over twenty years, not so much the last three to four years. Um, we chose to raise our family here. Um, I've spoke here before, and I had some pretty stern criticism for you on the council because this crisis has happened on your watch. And make no mistake, this is an absolute crisis. It's a crisis, it's happening all over the nation. We know that it's not an easy one, but it has to be addressed, and it has to be addressed with something that works. Um, when I spoke to you before, I mentioned your mission statement. I, I believe you might be trying to uphold that mission statement, which we voted you. Nobody forced you to run for, I realize it's hard, it's a volunteer position, but nobody forced you to run, you chose to run. Um, and we voted you into these positions thinking that you would uphold the mission statement, um, that you would be responsible to the voting population, that you would stand up for stewardship, that you would be courageous, and you would stand up for prosperous, um, livable community. Um, I'd like to say that I've read, um, this ordinance...
Oh, that's your two minutes, ma'am. That's your two minutes, ma'am.
And I think it's a good start.
Ladies and gentlemen, you've been asked not to clap, please don't. Uh, our next speaker is Ted Urtin.
Thank you, council members and staff. Um, I just have some comments on the proposed Vancouver-style ordinance that McMinnville was considering adopting. I'll make these comments quick. One, the timeframes are harsh, vindictive, and vengeful. A family with children would have to get up at five or five-thirty in the morning to be able to move out of their tent. Uh, two, this requirement is especially cruel to mothers and children. Where do you expect them to go during winter weather conditions, particularly rain and freezing weather? This is an especially onerous burden to expect of them, to leave the warmth of their sleeping bags in order to pack up and disperse to where? To the downtown area? Into our neighborhoods? Most of the services and businesses do not open until eight or nine AM. Uh, where do they find a bathroom or restroom? Three, what do these families do with their packed belongings? Just leave them in place and hope they're not stolen? Or do they find grocery carts and haul their belongings downtown during the day, moving up and down the sidewalks to keep warm and creating further congestion on the downtown streets? Four, it's been written that for those who do not comply and have their tents and supplies confiscated, they can be retrieved at the police department late at night. But how far do you think these folks are going to actually move? They'll be camping in the downtown area, it's going to be late at night, nine-thirty or later. I think you may see more people camping downtown than ever before. This proposed ordinance is a, uh, is hardly a solution. It is not a trauma-informed practice in a county that prides itself on having trauma-informed systems of care. It walks us away from the problem. We need low-cost, low- or no-barrier adaptable shelter communities to house the disenfranchised. A safe and warm home is the surest way to rehabilitation and recovery. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, our next speaker is Liz Stein. I hope I say that right. Liz, thank you.
I left my other part out of there, the Marley apart. Thank you so much. Did you want me to say where I'm...
No. Just go ahead.
Okay, so, um, I thank all of you for taking up this issue. I know it's complex, and it is something that all of our whole community, I feel, needs to be a part of addressing this whole crisis, not just you. So, um, I wanted you to, I, hopefully you got one of these flyers. We started a town hall, that is the third Wednesday of, um, of each month, and everybody is invited to help us with coming up with solutions. Our first town hall, we had about sixty people there, and it was, um, it was very thoughtful and, you know, I mean, Howie and I didn't, didn't know what to expect, and we were, we went away very grateful for the calmness and the solutions that came about. And I also have a list of the solutions that came from that first town hall, and I've given you each copy of that. And I just want people to realize that, I mean, we all need to understand that, that one statistic is that half of our US population is one paycheck away from homelessness. And, and I, I really admired the quote that one of our members of our community said, and that's that, that these people we call "other" are really "us," and we need to remember that. Um, the, a couple issues that came out of the town hall were that, um, we need to overcome mutual fear and mistrust, that everybody should...
Thank you, Liz. I'm sorry, that's your time.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, our next person is David Mim.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak here. Um, I'm a retired firefighter. I was a firefighter for thirty years, and I'm concerned about the costs involved in responding. First responders, police, fire, because there will be responses, and there will be dangers that are present in these possible low-barrier shelters. I, I foresee it happening. Uh, I received a needle-stip some thirty-some years ago and had to be tested every month for a month because there's a big potential there. We've lax, we are lax in our drug laws, we are, we do not have the, the, uh, facilities like damage and the mental institutions like we had in Salem years ago. And besides that, you know, if people aren't willing to help themselves, how are we going to force them out of the situations? You talk about moving the, the items if we, if we're, uh, moving people every morning at six o'clock and their, their valuables or personal belongings. I've seen the valuables long Fourth Street. I've seen the piles of egg cartons, the stacks of broken bicycle parts. Well, there's, those are things that happen when people are, are on drugs. I've seen it before. I'm, I'm very well versed in it, and, and these valuables are not movable, but they're not valuable. They're not, they're not items that they can trade for cash or anything, and somebody's going to be responsible for moving those out, and it's going to end up being the, the public, okay? The public will pay for it, and the public will pay for the police and the fire response. I think that we're biting off more than we could chew here. We need to do something now because we are in crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Our next speaker. Uh, ladies and gentlemen...
When you guys, uh, have a call, we'll call.
Our next speaker, you're taking time away from the speakers, by the way, is Tucker Williams.
My name's Tucker Williams. I recently moved to McMinnville with my wife and daughter. Um, I, uh, I'm the owner of Reynolds Dog Resort, which is, uh, just around the corner from Marsh Lane and Dustin Court, and the homeless camp's there, okay? Um, so I'm speaking to you tonight as a, as a father, as a small business owner, as a proud new citizen of McMinnville, um, and, uh, and as a Christian as well. Um, so I have a growing concern with the homeless population that appears to have gone unchecked in recent months. An overwhelming number of employees within my profession are female, and it is becoming more and more difficult to hire and retain quality employees. Uh, I recently, uh, spoke with an employee who, uh, who left, one of my best employees. She said, "I feel uneasy coming to work with a homeless camp nearby, especially in the evenings and the late-night dog runs. It made me feel uncomfortable." Also, received a number of complaints from customers. One, just this weekend, a lady, when asked if she would recommend our business, she said, "No, I had to drive through a huge homeless congregation on my way there. I did not feel comfortable." Council, I purchased a home and business in McMinnville, I invested my entire future here. This growing concern is threatening my future, has become an issue for all of the other local businesses nearby. I implore you to take this issue seriously. I'm willing to help in any way that I can, but I want to try and find a solution that does not come at the expense of residents or small business owners like myself. I don't know if the low-barrier shelter is the answer. Uh, to me, you know, it may help with some issues, but, uh, you know, those homeless people have to go to and from the camp, and that just means that they would be walking up and down my street at odd hours of the day, some of them questionable character, sobriety. So, though it may be a step forward for some people, for some small business owners...
Tucker, that's your limit, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
May I not fault me?
Thank you, council members. I'm a resident and a homeowner on Songbird Street. I'm a business owner, and I've had some time here in McMinnville, also had some time to listen to a lot of what our community has said. Um, I've also had some personal and professional concerns about the safety of my home and my business in this town. Theft, vandalism, and even occasional fear of walking through certain parts of town for my own safety and that of my family. I'm here in an attempt to address some of the big issues that our city is facing, not because our city is so unlike many others and our problems aren't new, weird, or out of the norm, but because it's our city, and people here know what they need and want to make it functional as well. Embracing our city means that we have, also have a duty to its survival. Um, as a council, you have been elected into positions because the city residents chose you. They know to make decisions based on the voices of its people. Our city is not rammed by one person but a collective many. As representatives of your wards, what do the residents and the business owners from your neighborhoods want? I don't believe this question has been asked or answered enough. I do not see citizen requests and demands on its leadership being taken seriously. I know that you have had a lot of effort and time put into some of the decisions that you've made and the efforts that you've made collectively as a council. But the fact is, we have visual effects of inaction. Camping on the streets and sidewalks, free phys, free citizens also live by the same laws as their, as their neighbors. A good neighbor doesn't litter on the sidewalk we all use or defecate on it, or park their broken or inoperable vehicles, or live in them, while you're paying into city taxes to fix the streets and sidewalks that they're residing on. This is a new era, and no one is saying you can't litter on them.
Yeah, that's the end of your time. Thank you.
Thank you for your time as well.
Ted McDaniel.
Where is the compassion for those who, of us who have, and let me please emphasize, struggled for a lifetime to build enough value into our homes and businesses to make it to the end of life with enough equity to survive? Where is the compassion for people who have done what society and life have asked? We have built our community, and we have elected you to help us manage to keep it a stable community. It is not compassion to have built an estate and to have it converted into a place where there must be provisions for sidewalk obstructing and camping and so-called sleeping, which is nothing more than squatters' rights upon the quality of life that has taken decades of delayed gratification to build. Compassion for the poor is important, and giving a hand up to someone who is willing to work as part of being a faith-based community, which needs to be confirmed. The more that is given, without it being earned by our resident vagrants, the more they arrive at the edge of town to find a place and meal for themselves. The word travels rapidly in any demographic, and that includes the paying customers who are looking for property to buy and for business opportunities. On Marsh and Dustin Lane, it is a nonsense world. Stopping the influx of vagrants into our safe and clean home settings is common sense leadership. Mobility of people who earn, risk, save, build equity in our property is very slow. It can take a lifetime of budgeting, doing without, and hoping it will not crumble before we are no longer productive. The very mobility of vagrants can enable a sanctuary, as in other communities where a stand is not being taken. From all points, they now arrive by bus campers and tents. There are plenty of compassionate words to explain why our streets and sidewalks should be the new homes to a protected class of people. Who will be compassionate when our equities are ruptured by failure?
Tim, I'm sorry, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dean Claus.
My name is Dean Claus, I happen to own the, the farm field next to Dustin's Court. So much of it's said so very eloquently here today. I'd like to say that what I note, as I said it back there, is, you know, that our kindness has become a burden to us, and I, I guess you could use the analogy, if my dad still let me stay at home and mom cook dinner for me, I'd still be there. There's a limit to how much you can provide for somebody for, at the point that they start taking advantage of it. Clearly, what's happening here in McMinnville is being taken advantage of. I work in Dallas often, and I've been in Dallas, I saw it two weeks ago, uh, probably twenty times, and I've got to see a homeless person in, in Dallas, and, of course, I see them often. Second thing that really has to get said in this, what you have control over is it takes money to solve this problem. It's going to take some kind of resources, it's going to take some location, it's not going to be perfect, you're not going to make everybody in this room happy, it's not going to solve everybody's problems. I think we've got a kind of change in behavior in our society. It's not like a pothole in the road that you're going to fix, and it's fixed, and you can drive away. It's going to have to be worked on continually. I think it's, might be true that we haven't expected much and we haven't got much. There hasn't been many rules in place, and it hasn't been much enforcement. I'm going to change this, make this a little bit humorous. Uh, this last week, I own another piece of property, I got a letter and said, "I've got trash in front of my property, and I need to clean it up." There's been trash in front of that property for five years. I'm looking forward to fixing it. It's Nick Miles, I called him today and said, "I'm going to get that cleaned up. You gave me the power to go to that renter and say, 'You're off of this property if you don't have it cleaned up.'" Chief Scales, you can buy him a check on me, make sure that that happens. Any event, you know, you got to expect something out of somebody, and they're not going to do it if you don't. He's a good renter, he's a nice guy. Now, I've got compassion for him, but he's going to clean up that yard after I got this letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Jacob Miller.
Uh, please forgive me, as I did simple on some of my words last time I was here, and I probably will again as I learn. But I'd like to speak in regards to the sun-up ordinance, and I can't help but to mention... to the sunup ordinance, and I can't help but to mention the amount of harassment...
Jacob, could you put the mic closer?
Yes, sorry. I'd like to mention the sundown, or the sunup ordinance, excuse me. And I can't help but mention the amount of harassment, oppression, discrimination, and the threats of violence my family has received from MACPD as well as the public since I last spoke here. It's been unprecedented. Seems to be retaliation, but I can assure you that we are trying to live in peace, and live peacefully and lawfully, and be conscious towards our Creator. Moving forward, I'd like to say, let's not forget, we're in Oregon, not Washington. Redefining camping will give you lawful standing. Standing is an aspect of justiceability which can't be waived. Changing the definitions won't give up corpus delecti or jurisdiction. None, get around. The procedural rules set by the Oregon Constitution, you might be able to deceive someone with the so-called crimes on paper, but the allegations would fail to meet every legal standard of what a crime is. And I'd like to also remind everybody that we do live in America, and laws that are repugnant the Constitution are void. We've also abolished a lot of these kind of hate laws. So more laws that do the hate, or more taxes, I don't think are the problem. I think closing, I'll tell you this, that I've walked an extra mile. I've tried to do my best here. I've turned the other cheek. I've even been forced to bend over and turn, sort my butt cheeks in jail. And I think enough is enough. It's time to repent from the hatefulness and the unlawful actions, and to start encouraging a viable solution rooted in love.
Thank you, Jacob. Joya, good run. Joya?
Good evening, Councilors.
Joya, talk into the mic. No, the other one.
This one.
Thank you. I like that one. All right, thank you.
Good evening, Councilors, staff and attendees. Thank you for your time this evening. We want to thank you for listening to your businesses and residents' concerns regarding the growing homeless crisis in our community. Regarding the Vancouver solution, we do have some questions as to camping being done in other areas of town, such as in front of homes once people have been moved from whatever location they are in. And I'd like to understand how, we'd like to understand how to address that. Regarding the franchise fees, we are concerned that you plan to vote on the resolution, we are concerned on that plan that you plan to vote on that resolution tonight. It was asked of the chamber to be collaborative with you. However, we were not involved in any discussion on the franchise fee topic. We are paying taxes already for our properties, our insurance, our gross receipts, and now you want to charge us more for our wastewater? To pay for what? The funds, according to the ordinance, will go to the general fund. It appears you want to use the funds for unrelated expenses other than the homeless crisis. Our desire would be to have the funds designated for a specific purpose and for a designated amount of time. We would be happy to work with you to find a short-term option to raise money to resolve the issue. The fees will hurt everyone in this community, especially those in low-income housing, the elderly, working families, and small businesses. Therefore, we oppose the franchise fees. Thank you.
Thank you, Joya. Brad Bassett.
McMinnville City Council, City Attorney David, you should all be ashamed of yourselves at this point. You have tattered the name of McMinnville by allowing something to happen on our streets that is completely illegal. You have interpreted the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals completely incorrectly. You laugh, David. I would personally ask for your resignation letter. You have not done well for this city, and I think you can hear by this city that has showed up here that we are not proud of what you are doing for us. If you think that the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals was justifying setting up tents on public right-of-way, you are wildly wrong. It specifically says that is not what they meant. I do support the ordinance brought up by Chief Scales. Thank you for doing that. I feel that will be a great solution to our growing problem. Remy, I would like to address the fact that you mentioned that no city cost will be associated with these safe car parking spots. If that's the case, why do we need to raise our sewer fees by 5%? That's $500,000 out of our local community. That's $500,000 that could have gone towards jobs. Remy, I'd also like to point out the fact that you mentioned you do not trust the citizens of this city. You said that if you will not release the locations of these camps because you are fearful of retaliation. You are fearful that we will attack. That's ridiculous. Based on what? The fact that we've come before you to communicate our frustrations with how you're managing our city? That makes us angry and attacking people?
Brad, that's it.
Thank you.
Scott Porlison.
It's a tough act to follow. All right, I'm going to see if this, I made a slideshow with my daughter. Okay, let's see, that's not going to work. Michelle, do you have anything?
It's not going to work.
It's not going to work. We've got a huge crisis. We know it. It comes down, and I want to again talk about the squatters on the right-of-way. We were once again vandalized, and I was so excited when I heard about the Vancouver law was coming out. But then I heard, "Oh, wait a minute. Are you telling me that it's not the city telling, it's not the city commissioners telling the city we're doing something? No, it's our own police chief going to the city saying, 'Please endorse.'" I want to fully endorse Matt Scales and saying, "This is the right direction to go," and I encourage the rest of the city to also back it. But we have got, when I went through last week, I counted 80 squatters. And what I hear about all the time is with Remy, is that we're trying, we have a huge, we have a huge problem, and we're trying to solve this with a Q-tip. At this slideshow, some of these squatters have been there for a year. Some of these huts have subfloors and walls. A right-of-way is never meant to keep a person alive for a year. I think you were going to say enough is enough.
Not quite yet, although I do want to say that Remy is not the only person who's responsible for this. I've been on that committee since the beginning, and I totally endorse everything she says.
And I do too, as one way to tackle a problem. But we have a problem like this, and we're trying to do it like this. When Remy came to me as a businessman, saying, "Hey, would you take on three businesses, three spots of your business? Would you take on a porta-potty, and would you bring in three?" No. I said, "No."
That's it, Scott. Sorry. Rhonda Langley.
Thank you, City Council and community members, for taking your time to hear us speak. I've lived in McMinnville for 16 years, and over the last several years, as many are testifying, we've seen a drastic change in the people in the area that are near my home. I see them loitering and smoking and actually selling drugs, actually recently. When speaking to the police several months ago, they said that they used to know the few homeless in town, but now the police do not know the homeless that are entering our town, nor do they know their criminal record. This winter, when it got down to 25 degrees weather and it was snowing, my children and I were playing near our home, and we discovered five tarps and tents that were set up in a neighboring forest. The homeless were choosing to live without heat, without water, without garbage, without toilet facilities, when there were plenty of beds at the local mission shelter here in town. During the winter, the drug and alcohol policies are relaxed at the winter emergency shelter. Why in the world are people choosing to stay in 25-degree weather with no facilities rather than have a warm bed and hot meal, running water, and toilet facilities? At the mission, the homeless are allowed to stay for 30 days. In 2018, they filled almost 10,000 beds and served 28,000 meals. They have seen many people experience empowerment, restoration, and self-sufficiency. The mission does not force or require anyone to participate in religious activities in order to get services. The mission currently has several shelter beds available, and I believe YCAP Shelter also has several beds. After the remodel at the mission, there will be 52 beds available. I think we ought to support the mission and the local established facilities that are already in our community. Free campsites, free needles are only perpetuating the situation and enabling people.
Rhonda, that's your limit. Dan Hilbert.
Dan Hilbert. Thank you all for sharing it. Appreciate it. There's a lot of passion on this issue. I won't address that, but I want to address an aspect of this problem here. I think increasing sewer rates to pay for homeless shelters that is unrelated to the expense and daily operation of McMinnville water and light is just bad government. I guess some people are not satisfied with extorting money from travelers, but now want to extort money from the general populace through a tax. Has McMinnville water and light become the internal revenue service here in McMinnville? Homeowners, businesses, and renters should be furious over this attempt to subject them to an unjust increase in sewer rates. You know, we just had a 2.8% sewer rate in January. It is my understanding that money could be used for other things, such as giving the general manager of water and light another 19% increase in his salary. Right now, Mr. John Dietz is the highest public-paid official in Yanhaile County, at $195,000 a year. If he stays on the job long enough, he'll be entitled to reap a generous pension from the public employee pension plan for not working. What we don't need are the increase in sewer rates. The tourism tax is already generating huge amounts of dirty money, which could be used to offset the disparity of these poor, tired, puddled masses. Just for the record, I'm on the side of Ms. Strapkin. She is also questioning where the money will go, where it was originally meant to go.
That's your time. Okay, we're at the end of the public comment period. And I'd like Director Jeff Knapp from Visit McMinnville to come and present his annual budget and annual report. Jeff?
Hi. That's a tough act to follow. Council, good evening. Thank you for your service to our community and dealing with all of the intricacies that it takes to keep a healthy community moving forward. I'm Jeff Knapp. For those of you that don't know who I am, I'm the executive director of Visit McMinnville, and this is Katri McGuire, director of marketing for Visit McMinnville. We run the economic development arm that is Visit McMinnville. Our main goal is to create economic development. So we promote, McMinnville is a year-round tourism destination overnight, and we want as many people to come and spend as much time as possible with us. So tonight, we're going to share with you sort of our review of last year's progress and our proposed plan for this year, and it's been a great year. So before we do so, I'd like to point out that we are a board-driven organization. We do have board members here in the audience representing tourism stakeholder businesses. We have Ty Rollins with Comfort Inn and Suites, Local Lodging, Ellen Britton, who is our treasurer with Britton Winery, Aaron Stevenson of the Atticus Hotel, Danny Chisholm with McMinnville Hotel Oregon, and of course, we have City Manager Jeff Tower and Clay McGee. So thanks for your service on our board and for letting us do what we do. I've got the best job going out telling people how great our community is and inviting them to visit. It's a year of big wins. First of all, I just want to let you know we measure our success in two ways. One, more people coming, so lodging statistics, more people coming more frequently, spending longer amounts of time with us, see increased revenues both for our efforts and for the city. And two, all of the efforts that we do outward, marketing, drive people to visit our website, and from our website quickly to other tourism stakeholders. So we've seen growth in all those categories. We are up 16% in annual website visits, which we're estimating will be 127,000 visits this year of unique visitors. So we, everything that we do ties back to economic development for the city of McMinnville. These are the McMinnvilles, we are, economic prosperity is one of your recent top priorities for the city. The four economic development organizations for town are Downtown Association, McMinnville Economic Development Partnership, the Chamber, and us. Our roles, where we fit in, in the MAC Town 2032 Plan are here. Under 6.2, become the preferred destination for wine-related tourism. 6.3, diversified tourism destinations beyond wine. And 6.4, market and promote McMinnville. So this is the lens that we use when looking forward with our plan and tying it back to what the city deems as priority. We use data and statistics to do that. Tourism is an economic driver. Good news, tourism in McMinnville and Yanhaile County is up significantly. So as of last year, over $119 million in tourism dollars flowing into Yanhaile County. That is almost a 50% increase since 2010. It creates jobs, over 1,800 tourism industry jobs in Yanhaile County, up 50% since 2010 as well. And it generates revenue. So tax receipts to the city of McMinnville for the transient lodging tax, 30% of those revenues going back to the city is a 41.7% increase since 2015 when we were formed. So things are growing. We call out the wine industry here because we live in a particularly interesting area, that being the majority of the Oregon wine industry, which is close to a $6.6 billion economic impact statewide. The majority of that is located here in Yanhaile County. So over 250 wineries within 20 miles of here, creating a large percentage of the 7,625 jobs, creating a lot of earnings in our state for wages. We predict a conservative growth this year in tax receipts to the city of an additional close to $100,000. So it's, things are looking up. How are we doing with lodging? This is very, the graphs are hard to read, so I'll try to point this out from a distance. That red line indicates demand for hotels, and that blue line indicates growing demand for vacation rentals. Year-over-year, vacation rental demand increased. Those are the number of rooms booked. The last fiscal year has increased by 69%. It's a very large number. And hotel demand increased with the addition of new hotels like the Atticus and the Best Western coming online. We still see hotel demand increase of nearly 20%. So you can see the ups and downs, the cyclical. We work on focusing our energies on attacking those low areas of winter and fall and implementing marketing programming to turn those numbers around. But these are large growths, and we see not only a growth in supply, demand, price paid, across the board. This tells us that we could use, there's room for growth in the market. We could use another hotel. So who are we? We're an economic development organization. We do so through managing our destination in two ways, two main pillars, communications and promotions, which Katri oversees, and I primarily focus on destination development. So this evening, we would like to take you through sort of our big wins for last year, our projections for this year, and dip a little bit into the strategy and the data behind that. So I will turn it over to my colleague, who is more articulate than I.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for your time tonight. I want to start by first talking about the promotions arm of what I do, and then I'll go into communications. So one of our biggest efforts in 2018 was a rebrand of Visit McMinnville and the creation of an aligned marketing campaign to promote McMinnville as a premier year-round tourism destination to benefit tourism stakeholder businesses and create economic development in our community. The first step to this was to gather data. We had to ask the question... We had to ask the questions, what we wanted to visually communicate about ourselves and what action we wanted potential visitors to take. We did this through a half-day session with our board of tourism stakeholders, going through branding exercises to help us define those things. And we utilized input from community members stemming from a wayfinding survey that we did two years ago. We also held two consumer surveys, one for visitors who had recently come here and experienced McMinnville for themselves, and one for people who thought about McMinnville but chose a different destination. We wanted to learn why they chose not to come to McMinnville. So from stakeholders and community members, four brand attributes really rose to the surface. McMinnville is honest, elegant, flexible, and friendly. We use this metric you see here to measure how we visually communicated those things and included them in our logo. You can see how each of these fonts represent the attributes in their own way. We combined them all to create a custom font that ultimately became our logo. This logo is highly visible in a wide variety of settings and subtly communicates what we want people to know about McMinnville, without painting us as one type of destination. We can be a lot of things to a lot of people. We love the special connection of the V to the I, which represents the hillsides and the valley. So from this point, we built out additional brand attributes like tone and voice, colors, font families, to help round out that visual communication of what McMinnville has to offer. I mentioned that we also did surveys of people who visited and chose not to visit. The people who visited, when we asked them what they loved about McMinnville, they said that there was just a little something magical about our community, that there was a specialness to it, and that those who traveled elsewhere, they chose not to go to McMinnville, mainly because there was a sense that there just wasn't enough to do here. This information helped us build an aligned campaign that we call Land of Plenty. To start the campaign and grab attention, Visit McMinnville utilized intentionally minimal billboard-style color block ads with engaging statements. This campaign was intended to create a visual break from previous creative styles, be highly visible, and stand out from typical and expected wine country advertising. In the second part of the Land of Plenty campaign, we created engaging images and video that capture that sense of magic that people said that they experienced when they came here. We are an come-as-you-are kind of town that leaves visitors feeling like they've experienced something just a little bit extraordinary. We plan to utilize investments made in these high-quality engaging creative pieces over the next two years to reach targeted consumer groups that our data says is, are likely to visit McMinnville. For our efforts, last month, we were awarded the Travel Oregon Overall Tourism Marketing Award, an honor given to one tourism entity each year that has demonstrated outstanding representation of their destination as well as efficacy in their marketing efforts, and we're very proud to have represented McMinnville in this way. So next comes the communications part of what I do for Visit McMinnville. Media relations is sometimes called earned or unpaid media because pieces written about McMinnville in publications are not paid for. They're earned through establishing relationships with writers, editors, and influencers. So you can see here just a few of the publications that wrote about McMinnville since the beginning of our fiscal year. We were actually written up in many, many more. You can see here that we were written about in 203 unique publications, and we did so by hosting media and by pitching McMinnville to targeted media. We also hosted an activation in New York. This was a major effort that had a huge return on our investment. The majority of national media live here, so we were able to reach them all in one shot rather than trying to bring individuals to McMinnville to experience the magic that we have to offer. For the same cost as one print ad in a national magazine, we hosted an event attended by over 30 travel and lifestyle writers. We showcased a wide variety of McMinnville businesses, including a new tourism asset at that time, the Atticus Hotel. We were very pleased with the day of results and have received several write-ups about McMinnville because of the event. We brought three high-level writers out to McMinnville, following their engagement at the event as well. We plan to do another activation in New York again to continue the momentum of our campaign that we've invested in. So I've gone through promotions and communications, our successes and plans. I'll hand it over to Jeff to talk about another pillar of Visit McMinnville, which is destination development.
Thanks. So destination development. We all know what we have as assets here in McMinnville. Clearly, the organic nature that sprung around us, we have natural beauty. But the main driving thing here is currently food and beverage. We've got that. We've got it down. It's wonderful. People come for that. But to really be a world-renowned destination, it would help us to diversify. So destination development is us focusing on what are the other things that we can be working on that are complementary to the assets that we have, that don't take away from those assets and the stakeholders that benefit from them, but what are the pluses that we can add? And these, through data and strategy, are the things that we've outlined. We feel that opportunities are in outdoor recreation. I'll go through all of these. Arts and culture, agritourism, and group sales. So we've identified cycling as a, as a, the lowest hanging, the lowest hanging fruit, the easiest intro with the biggest bang for access of our outdoor recreation. We have countless miles of beautiful coastal gravel. Gravel riding and cycling is the hottest new thing. We have that in abundance, and we know that people are coming here to do it. And they're coming here to ride on our roads, too. The safety of that is another thing. So we try to- we've worked with partners, the Bureau of Land Management actively on developments in the Nostocka Corridor region, local, local cycling enthusiasts, local cycling groups, the county. And we've, we've really formed a momentum here. We started by investing in this, what you see up here, it's called Ride with GPS. It is an industry leader in crowdsourcing routes. And you can set ambassadors. So we have, like Tommy's Bikes is our local ambassador saying, you know, "These are, these are safe routes that we would recommend at McMinn-" you know, "You come and participate in McMinnville." Now cyclists are our target for several reasons. One, they are right in line with, in alignment. Data shows that they're very similar visitors as people who enjoy culinary and food. They generally trend to have larger expendable budgets. So we look for kind of that smaller traffic, higher return. They tend to book longer trips, so if they can come here and cycle a couple of days and eat and visit wineries, all the better. So we've been, we are actively promoting safe cycling routes and partnering to funnel potential grand dollars and funding into organizations that can help increase this area. We really feel like there's some, this is the, the next thing for, not just McMinnville, but for Yanville County. Arts and culture, again, the more things to do other than go out, drink wine, and eat food. Sorry about wineries and restaurants, stakeholders, but the more that there are reasons to go see a show, see a gallery, see public art. McMinnville's got an abundance of it, and we are putting it all together. We've, we've produced a walkable art mac of our public and private galleries, and we're putting dollars behind promoting that. We've moved them front and center on our website. We've hired monthly contributors to write on arts and culture for the, the area. And we want to be the go-to. We are currently- our, our largest traffic for website visits, our second-largest traffic are people looking for things to do outside of food and beverage. So our event calendar is- we want to be the go-to for the, for the region. Beyond that, in keeping to our commitment to the city and exploring ways to directly impact that low season or that low December to April timeframe, we've invested in a contract employee to help us with group sales. So we've hired an amazing woman named Rachel Adams, who is, has a history of being tied into local wine tourism in the area. And she's hosting familiar, fam tours of the area for local event planners, whether it's corporate events, wedding planners, sporting events. She's engaged the Oregon Film Commission, the Oregon Sports Authority. She pitches regional organizations on our event assets. She's assembled a catalog, library of the assets that we have, and we're out actively trying to recruit people to book whatever size event they have that's appropriate here in McMinnville. So regional efforts. This is a big thing for us. It's certainly, this is the last thing, but certainly not the least. And this is, this kind of goes to that proverb, "If you want to go fast, go alone, and if you want to go far, go together." When we became an organization in 2015, it was apparent that the- McMinnville was sort of an island in floating out here in tourism limbo, disconnected from, I guess, all of the agencies above us, and we worked very hard to repair those and connect us up the chain, both in tourism and identifying partners with similar goals, similar missions, and budgets, which we can work together to achieve common goals. So looking for that leverage. So we've, we've worked with Yanville County, the Tourism Partnership, Willamette Valley Visitors Association, Travel Oregon, Oregon Wine Board, Willamette Vineyards Association, and on and on. And to that effort, we have, we have targeted Seattle as a market for our focus and our efforts. And we've been building to this for the last two years. Last year, we made a big investment in creative assets that would stand in a large market like Seattle. So we, with the intention of moving to advertising in the Seattle market in particular. Why Seattle? It's our number-two visited- we see that it's the number-two largest supplier of visitors to us currently. We know that in the next one to two years, we're likely to see an economic slowdown. And in economic slowdowns, we tend, people tend to still travel, they just do so by car. So we feel like it's a, it's a- and it hits all of the, the major buckets of data and strategy. So we've taken that, and we've partnered with the Willamette Valley Visitors Association, who's agreed to focus all of their marketing efforts on the Seattle metro area for the next two years. And we are in talks with Willamette Valley Wineries Association and Travel Oregon, who have both committed to, to put dollars into the same market. So when you look at our budget and marketing dollars, you're like, "That's a lot of money." Well, in the world of marketing, in Seattle, for instance, for example, last year, Travel Oregon spent $300,000 in one month. So for us, really to make an impact and to make a strategic decision, we've partnered and leveraged not just our dollars, but our partners. So we feel pretty proud and excited about that. So I've sent out the detailed plan. You have that PDF as well, we can go through that. But we'll just jump into our proposed numbers that we're, that we're estimating. So we're predicting a very conservative 5% growth. Now, this year, we've seen 39% growth in transient lodging tax revenue. A lot of that due to the Atticus Hotel coming online. But even without the Atticus, we would still see close to a 12% increase normalized. So, which is still a very good increase. So our total estimated transient lodging tax revenue is looking at one, estimated at 5% is $1.2 million. So that puts our Visit McMinnville budgeted 69% as mandated by the laws that surround transient lodging tax and their use at $866,000. And the city's revenue jumping about $100,000 to $389,468. Above is the breakdown for our GNA and our marketing and development expenses. You'll see that our budgeted expenses are not, are less than our budgeted anticipated revenue. And the next slide will show kind of how we tend to spend those dollars. This is the first year that we are, we are spending the amount of money that we are on advertising as we are playing in that Seattle market. And we've really grown over the last three years strategically to be able to do so. We've been historically playing in the Portland market and regions that are closer to us because it's cheaper and people know who we are. We have a lot more weight to pull up there with those dollars. So we're very excited about our plan this year. I can go through the detail line by line. You also have a PDF of that in your- it's not on here, I guess. But you, you did receive our business plan line by line in that strategy, and we would accept questions now. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Time for some questioning. Anybody want to start?
There we go. Evening. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for all the hard work, doing the hard work of marketing McMinnville. Main, one main question, we had a chance to catch up prior, so it cleared a lot of my questions. One would be with your fiscal forecasting often not reflecting what it actually comes in, in that you end up with great savings. And yet, year-over-year, you've seen great growth. How are you guys figuring through the next few years in terms of where you want to be and the dollars that are going to come in? Does that question make sense? So, you know, you're forecasting conservatively, but you're seeing great growth process-wise.
Sure.
I know you give it to visioners, so how are you looking out for? Are you going to maintain your kind of a conservative thinking approach and implementation as numbers come in?
Yeah, so our, we always are going to budget fiscally response, you know, on the, we're going to budget conservatively, sorry, and hope for the best results. I mean, we are operating under the assumption that we will continue the agreement with the city that we have in the contract under the TLT law of operating at 70%. Should laws change, as I know that recently, for instance, you voted to support the letter that if SB 595 passes and there are, there is an ability to have the council make a decision to allocate funds under the law towards other efforts, we would have that conversation at that time. For us, the majority of our expenses are discretionary, so we can, we're not in long-term contracts with things, so we can, we operate with those things in consideration, I guess. So if we had to stop all marketing, the majority of expenses that we have, we would just not be effective. We would just push pause and stop doing our job, I guess. You know, for us, our job is to spend as much as we can that when we have it, as an investment. So we see that when we invest those dollars, we see a return. We see website traffic, we see people coming and spending dollars. So for us, we're as effective as our resources.
That makes sense. When you're, one thing you guys have is your, your call as, not, if you're trying to make a distinction between tourism organization or tourism, for tourism promotion, if you're trying to quote, you know, include economic development in your words. So are people coming to you for avenues, say, "I want to come to the-"
For sure.
And succeeding in your ability to market McMinnville. I am someone who wants to have a commercial endeavor that also boosts what you guys are trying to offer and develop.
Yes. Lots of people come and want to know.
And do they come to you and ask as a resource to say, "How should I invest in your community to engage and also benefit in that?"
They do come to us. And we provide them data. And they, whether it's a person interested in opening a hotel, or a restaurant, or a-
Airbnb.
Airbnb, any stakeholder business, we, we spend a lot of time with that. A lot. I'm positive.
Could you maybe speak to the organizations you're a part of and how you're influencing those organizations and overall growing tourism throughout the area, the region?
Sure, that's a part. So I, I think first and foremost, for us, tourism on a state level is a $12 billion industry. It has a massive impact, direct revenue on the state. One of the top visitor things to do, wine travel is a $6 billion industry. So when we look at Oregon, we kind of look, people come here predominantly for outdoor recreation or for culinary, food, wine, beer-type travel. That's the data. We have that in spades, not the outdoor rec part. When I, the system and structure that's set up to represent our area on our state level, the, the resources that are held, grant funding, and I guess, representation out there is represented by the Willamette Valley Visitors Association. Historically, they have been a volunteer board for 30 years without an executive director and without a seat really representing- and without a seat really representing our interests for the last several years. So I've worked very hard to restore the seat at that level, to open the channel of funding and resources through the Willamette Valley Visitors Association. We have moved from a volunteer working board to a governing board who will be hiring an executive director, paid staff, that is, that will hopefully improve transparency and equality, equity amongst the regions. And in addition to that, I've been working diligently with the county to come up with a solution. The county really needs to step up and figure out their role in this because they need to. So there's a lot of opportunities that they're missing out on, whether it's marketing. I don't, I think that personally, there are opportunities in destination development, but we've also worked to form a group of stakeholders that are countywide, representing all cities, to formalize, create bylaws, and structure, much like Visit McMinnville or another organization, to move the county discussion forward. Because, you know, rising tide, I believe, really does truly float all boats, and McMinnville is, we have a lot of assets and we have a lot of things to offer, and we can really stand up and be leaders within the region, so I've been working on that, and so has Kitchry.
One other question. Just could you address, there's kind of a feeling that tourism jobs are low-paying jobs, and could you kind of give us an idea of how that spectrum works out in this area?
It's a question that I'm going to be working really hard to, thank you for asking it. Tourism jobs, I think, commonly have a perception that they're low-paying jobs, and I'm sure that as all entry level, there are entry levels to everything. If we're looking at the industry, we can break it out in a lot of different ways. For our area, the industry that's driving tourism the most is wine tourism, and those jobs are not, you know, they're living wage jobs, they're well-paying jobs. I've got data to support all that. I don't have the numbers in front of me to quote, but the average part-time, like, so entry level, part-time wine person, front staff is a $14 an hour job. Average management salaries, I think, are $50,000 to $60,000, and then, you know, top execs are making $80,000 to $100,000. So I don't know, I have the numbers. As far as jobs, I, you know, I would say that I don't have the data to support every level of jobs, but I would say it was something that we should investigate and look at.
I can provide it at the next meeting. Sal, do you have anything you want to discuss?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Adam.
Thank you for the presentation, and I appreciate everything you guys do. You've done a phenomenal job since Visit McMinnville started. The growth on this presentation, I would say, could be attributed strongly to the Atticus Hotel coming on board and how you guys leverage that to have those visitors. So without a big project like that coming on board, what do you guys look to leverage this year to continue that type of exponential growth?
I think we see growth in TLT because of that, but clearly, that's not thwarting more visitors coming and paying, you know, the data shows that if we take the Atticus out of the picture, we would still be growing revenue-wise by 11%. And we still see a 69% increase in vacation rentals, and our occupancy is capping in other areas. So it's nice to have a big shiny new toy and asset to promote, and we'll continue to do so. But you know what? We've got an awesome new restaurant opening down the street, Pizza Capo, which we are going to, you know, promote. We have Mac Market that's going to open in July. So as we make these investments, it makes it a more attractive place for people to come and invest in the community and provide jobs and start those businesses, and we're going to leverage whatever those are, whatever those opportunities are that pop up, and we'll continue pushing earned media, getting them out here, getting them on the grounds to experience what that specialty Kitchry was talking about, that you can't put your finger on until you step on Third Street or in the greenery.
Outside of revenue and the possibility of 595, what do you guys see as your biggest potential unknown to visit McMinnville?
Potential unknown? I see, I'm an opportunities ear, so I'm always looking for opportunities, and I see nothing but opportunities. So the biggest, I mean, the biggest unknown for us is that first, I guess, somehow, we're not doing, people don't understand what we do, or we're not tying our work to economic impact in a proper way because we're so busy working outward-focused that we're not slowing down to focus inward. So I don't know. I mean, I guess maybe if things slow down in the market and we see less visitors, if there was a catastrophic earthquake or something, I could think that could be not that great for us. But as far as, our area is just, I see nothing but upward growth and interest both from local investor, investment to international investment in our area, and it's best to be steering that growth and having these conversations, so.
And last question, what identified Seattle as the next area to grow towards?
Yeah, so we looked at data, both from Travel Oregon and the data that we collect. When we look at visitors who are currently visiting us, Seattle, at least in vacation rental sense, Seattle is the number-two market. It's a big market, and again, with the idea that we may be going into, which Travel Oregon also, it's a top priority market for them, so we can align with them. And it's also, it's not as expensive of playing out of, you know, in San Francisco or somewhere like that, but it's just attainable enough. It's a large enough market where there's plenty of people that don't know what McMinnville is, and it's close enough so that if there is an economic downturn, that people are likely to still get in their car and make that trip. It's not dependent on a flight.
Thanks. So first of all, Jeff, I want to say, like everybody else on the board, I'm very enthusiastic about the work that you've done, the, both your media and the paid pieces that you're doing are exceptional. So I want you to take every comment that I'm about to make in that light, because it's not a question of your.
Sure, thanks.
You and I have had a couple of conversations offline about the transient lodging tax in general, and for residents who are here who are not familiar with how the transient lodging tax works, for cities that implemented a transient lodging tax after 2003, we're required by statute to spend 70% of that money on tourism-related activities, and 30% can go to the general market. Under the arrangement that we've always had at Visit McMinnville, Visit McMinnville automatically gets the 70%, and they've been doing a good job with that money. But my view, and it's a view that I've consistently advocated for on this council, is that the council should take an intermediate step before we hand off that money, which is now $869,000 specifically for tourism-related activities, and think about whether or not that's the best allocation for the city. And so while I'm very supportive of the marketing efforts in your budget, and I see that about half of the money is targeting, you know, paid marketing, you know, I'm mindful of the fact that that money can be used in other ways, not just on Visit McMinnville. We could use it to do capital improvements at the airport, which is certainly a tourism-related facility. We could use it to purchase and redevelop concert space in the city. We could use it to purchase and develop convention center space in the city. To the extent that we have staff filling tourism-related activities, we could use that to backfill some of that as well, and I believe there's a real need for that going forward because we're in an environment where current service levels for governments, local governments across the board over the next five to 10 years are dropping. They're dropping because of increased costs on it statewide on the one hand, and a challenge in declining revenues on the other for local governments. So I think we need to be more conscientious about how we spend these taxpayer dollars. It's not a reflection of the work that you're doing in Visit McMinnville, and I think the work is important. I think we should continue funding that work, so I want to be clear about that. But I also think we should be having a conversation about other ways that these resources can be spent, and I think we should be revisiting the contract going forward and giving that some consideration. So I want to put that on the record, that that's my position, so that you're aware of it going into your budgeting, and wanted to share with you the basis for that in a public setting so that people would have the opportunity and also to give you the opportunity to respond.
Sure.
Jeff, could, would you mind awfully? We'd like to do just about a five-minute break here for, we've been sitting here for a while.
Okay.
And then we can reconvene in about five minutes.
Sure.
My apologies.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So five minutes, everyone.